Welcome everyone. It is Monday, January 8th, 2024. It's time for a regularly scheduled city council meeting. Ask the clerk to certify the meeting notice.
This noticed how this meeting has been noticed in accordance with Idaho Code 74-204.
Thank you. Clerk call roll please.
Councilmember Heller?
President.
Councilmember Jacobs?
Here.
Councilmember Jorgensen?
Here.
Councilmember Page?
Here.
Thank you. Next item is the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item D is changes to the agenda. Seeing none, we will move to the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I move to approve the consent agenda as written.
Second. Got a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item F, special business. We have a little changing of the guard this evening. I'm excited and not excited at the same time. Russ Heller has been with us two years on the council and Russ, I just want to express how much I've appreciated having you at my right hand over here, helping me pronounce words, working on my vocabulary a little over time, but you've been a steady hand, very thoughtful. And you've been a real asset and I knew you would be when when I offered your appointment to the council. So it's with mixed feelings that you leave your council position, but I'm still thrilled that you've agreed to stay and become a member of our library board. So anyway, we're going to take a few minutes and anybody wants to visit about Russ and then Russ is going to get a final word.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I just wanted to echo your words. In the, in the time that Councilmember Heller has been with us, it's, it's been such a busy time for the city. Our agenda packets have been thick. They've been technical. And from the beginning, one thing that impressed me about Russ is just how he always aggressively did due diligence. If there was something that was technical or there was a historical background that needed to be learned, Russ would lean to staff or the council president. Many of his questions were so advanced, I had to go to someone to find the answer myself. So he, he drank from the fire hose and did it with panache. Another another thing that's impressive about Russ was with with the public, the utmost civility in speech and to the colleagues, respect and deference. And he thanked me many times for being a mentor, but you know, I'm not sure who taught who more. Finally, every time I spoke with Russ, my vocabulary grew because I had to go home and consult the dictionary. So thank you for that, Russ.
Mr. Mayor?
Thank you.
I would also like to, to share my sentiments. I cannot express how much I admire you and how much I appreciate what you've contributed to the council. You've always been incredibly thoughtful in your studying and, and understanding the, the topics and issues and, and in the past two years, we've had big issues come in front of this council. And I've really admired how well you've, you picked up, you dug in, you contributed, you thoughtfully approached members of the community with their concerns. And you've always been such a gentleman and you always, always arrive with the best attitude and are always so happy. And I will sincerely miss your joyful presence here on the council.
Thank you. You so much.
Mr. Mayor, my turn. So Russ and I came out at the same time. So he goes about a month ahead of me and so I felt that we did our first two years together. And Russ is always so polished. I think I always did one well dressed always and it always is very polished and and I always admired that and looked up to that. And I hope that at some point that I can have that same level of just, of just being wise and polished and very careful.
Get a tie?
I gotta learn how to tie it. No, but hang on, no, just, you know, just your wisdom and you're, you're very polished and the questions you ask were so articulate. And you know, I think all of us, the rest of us just kind of learned from that. And a lot of his, your background as an educator just kind of came through in terms of the way you ask those questions and, and articulate. So you know, Russ is, is I kind of, I kind of look at it, you and I were in the same class, so to speak. And it was great to spend these first two years with you. We miss you very much. Also excited that Kent on board as well, but it, it's too bad we can't have five council members. But you know, thank you for everything.
Thank you, Bill. Mayor? Thanks, Mr. Mayor. You're also kind. I don't know if I can, I'll have to read my remarks because I'm tearing up. But thank you for, thank you for those kind sentiments. And I, I have enjoyed this tremendously. It's, it's been a great pleasure to, to work with you and everybody in the city and the staff. And I thank you for that opportunity, Mr. Mayor. First, I offer my congratulations to Mr. Page and Mr. Rassmussen for their successful campaigns. I know my two yard signs made the difference and I, I take credit, small credit for, for that. So job's well done. Thank you, Mayor Evans, for my appointment to the council. And thank you fellow council members for your vote of confidence. I've learned a great deal in my brief tenure, including the importance of redlining Thursday, Friday, and the weekend before council meetings in order to study our council packets, which I, I think we actually have one with 740 pages. Yeah. But I certainly learned a lot in doing so. Councilmember Jacobs, I admire so much your cheerful, energetic, uninhibited inquisitiveness and consistent fidelity to our comprehensive plan. Your questions and concerns have always added a great deal to our deliberations and I know they will going forward. Councilmember Jorgensen, from the start, I've been impressed with your thoroughness and preparation for council meetings. Your probing for clarifications, your sense of humor, and your keeping a particularly close eye on safety, traffic congestion, and that forbidden fruit of decision documents aesthetics. Mr. Waddams reminds us of that. Council President Page, you've been a true mentor and a patient guide to my journey as a council member. Your deep reflections on the effects of our decisions expressed with precision in our council deliberations reflect a kind soul and sincere empathy for our community members. I'll miss our coffee conversations, always by the way, hypothetical and in compliance with the Waddams imperative. See nothing, say nothing. But I've enjoyed them very much and learned a lot from our conversations. Mayor Evans, your depth of experience has given you unmatched expertise and a perspective on this community from 30,000 feet to its microscopic detail. Your sage advice, calm, steady hand on proceedings is a leadership model for mutual respect, the absence of ego and deliberation, and efficient, effective civil decision making. Bless you, young man.
I think I'm a day younger than he expected.
In the end, the success of our city council is dependent on the labors and communication of our city staff. I've never worked, I've been around a bit and worked with lots of boards and lots of, lots of staffs, but I've never worked with a more professional, congenial and helpful group than Mr. Waddams, Ms. Libby, Ms. Thornborough, Ms. Smith, Mr. Schmidt, Chief Stambaugh, your respective teams and every city employee I have met. Your depth of skills, knowledge of the city's workings and courteous assistance create the knowledge base of the council's decisions. Garden City is a better place because of your work and your willingness to serve this community. It's been a great honor and privilege to have joined you in this work and you have my sincere appreciation, heartfelt thanks. Thank you all. Just a minute. We haven't replaced you just yet. Next order of business is the installation of the newly elected officials. The first of which on our agenda is our council president, James Page. James, if you would go to the clerk, we'll swear you in. And
You, James Page solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Idaho and that you will faithfully discharge the duties of council member of the city of Garden City according to the best of your ability.
I do.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Mayor.
James.
It's a pleasure to be elected again and and to continue serving. I, I hope to serve all of those regardless of their vote. And looking forward to another four years.
We're going to work you hard. Next, Kent, would you come up? Kent is moving from his chairmanship of our planning and zoning commission to the city council.
You, Kent Rasmussen solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Idaho and that you will faithfully discharge the duties of council member of the city of Garden City according to the best of your ability. Congratulations.
I'm waiting to see if Russ stays for the rest of the meeting.
There is a small foot bump.
Yeah?
Welcome, Councilmember.
Thank you. Awesome, man. Make it official.
Thanks for coming, John.
Thanks, officer.
Enjoy your evening. Hey, the next order of business, special business number two is the election of a council president for calendar year 2024.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Our constituents have demonstrated a trust in the president of the council, James Page. He's also demonstrated over time care for the city in his dedication and willingness to serve. I believe he also commands the respect of the city staff and that he has led this council diligently and thoroughly in his preparation and guidance to us as council members. And representing the, this council to the city and members of the community, he's done an outstanding job. Further, he's done an amazing job crafting some very complex motions. And based on these items, I enthusiastically nominate president of the council, James Page, to another term as president of the council.
I would second that. I don't think it could be worded any better.
Thank you. I've got a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on that motion? Hearing none, the clerk call roll.
Councilmember Jacobs?
Yes.
Councilmember Jorgensen?
Yes.
Councilmember Page?
Yes.
Councilmember Rasmussen?
Yes.
Next item is our annual appointment to committees. First one is light, library liaison. This is the only one of these appointments that is mandated by state statute. It requires really the position's really designed to be a liaison between the city council and the library board of trustees. So we all kind of work as a unit because of the size of the town here. But the expectation is, is that whenever possible, and hopefully that's relatively often, that the council or the library liaison is able to attend the library board meetings, which are held once a month at three o'clock in the afternoon on Sunday. But do you know, is that what they?
I believe it's a Tuesday or a Thursday.
Anyway, the ACCEM is the Ada City County Emergency Management Board that board operates vis a vis a joint powers agreement and we administer, we develop policy and administer federal funds that come to Idaho for emergency mitigation activities. That money involves a training for emergency response, everything from flooding to mass shootings. It's earmarked. Some of the expenditures, 25% of it has to go for capability for law enforcement. But the ACCEM also supports the Red Cross at times, supports EMS, emergency medical services and fire departments in Ada County. I'm the I'm the primary on that. Those are quarterly meetings. You know, I should have had all these dates for you all. I'm the primary on that one. I remain the primary on Compass. I remain the primary on Valley Regional Transit in deference to I think everybody actually has a regular job. This past year, Bill has been our Boise Valley Economic Partnership member, I guess.
Person.
Person? Is that something you'd like to continue?
I do mind to guess.
Okay. Okay. Is anybody able, willing or capable of or fill in your own adjective to deal with the library liaison position? You? Okay, Teresa.
Unless, no.
I mean, I'm open to it. So I I think you know, it's great that, that you volunteer, but I'm, I'd be perfectly willing to do that as well. So.
Well, that's for you all to work out. I put Teresa down and then I think the intent of the statute is, it's a singular, a liaison, but given the relationship between the library board and the city council, which is a very strong one, very cooperative. Maybe if you have a conflict, you could see if Kent could fill in. That work?
That sounds, sounds great.
Okay. So Teresa's primary, Kent is the backup. And these others, if I need backup, I can appoint a staff member. It's pretty hard to walk in cold on any of these other three if you aren't up to speed on everything. You know, it's
Mr. Mayor, we'd like to thank you for your constant commitment to the ACCEM, Compass and the BRT. I know it's busy as your schedule, especially during the legislature, but your reputation throughout the valley as a leader and an example reflects so positively to Garden City. So thank you for taking on those additional duties.
Well, thank you. It's my pleasure. I like the one team, one city, one team moniker we have here. You know, whether it's police, public works, development services. We need to get something done. There's somebody that's willing to do it. So that's really great. Okay, we'll move on to item four. Under special business. This is an authorization for a homeowner at 5901 Northbrook Place to utilize one meter to serve two dwelling units. This is in our packet on page 32. Colin, can you bring us up to speed?
Yeah, mayors, mayor, members of the council. Every once in a while, we get a request from a homeowner to put two dwellings on the same lot and run the water off the same connection to our system off the service line. We, like I said, we don't get it very often, but when we do get it, it needs to come in from the city council. So I can kind of give you an idea what, what we expect to happen. The, the line, the lines were only designed for one home. So when a homeowner wants to do this, they're taking a five A's line meter. They'll split it, they'll run it into two different homes. So it decreases the volume available at any certain time. So we make sure they're aware of that. So they, we don't get phone calls about this. One of the things that they need to understand is that they will incur another water meter base rate. There's also a sewer base rate that's included with that because now we have two homes going into our sewer system where initially there was only a single home. And recently, Boise has changed their trunk and treatment connection fees, which we abide by since they are the ones that run the, the sewer treatment. We are only collections. So any increases they have in their rates, we pass those through to our, our customers. And that I believe is $1,905 in addition. So when somebody wants, and this, this has to do with an ADU, which has become quite popular in the last few years. So there had to be some way, I guess, for Boise to financially take care of something like this. And this, this is what they've come up with. So when we get questions, which we did on this one and rightfully so, we let them know that there's this fee. There's also going to be two sewer, two water base rates. And then the water consumption and the sewer, the sewer flow just is what it is. You know, the more water you use, more than likely, the more sewer there is. So the costs are associated with that. So I would stand for any questions you might have on that. I know it, it kind of gets a little convoluted, but.
Mr. Mayor, a point of order, could I just give a brief update from the legal department on that?
Sure.
This was on the agenda at the last council meeting, just to remind four out of the five of you. Actually, I think Mr. Rasmussen was there in the, in the gallery over there, but I was asked to get with the applicant and see if she would be willing to sign an indemnification and a release of liability because there is some risk involved in this. I have reached out to her. She's agreeable to sign the release. I have emailed her a draft of the release. I'm just waiting for her to sign it and return it. So I don't think that'll be a problem. I would ask that if the council does want to approve this, that it would be contingent on her signing that release and then we'll keep it in the development services case file. The code section that we're looking at is under the municipal code, the Garden City Municipal Code, and it's six dash two dash five. And I'll just read, it says, subsequent to investigation by the public works director, the city council may grant permission for a single meter to serve more than one water consumer. Upon granting of an exemption, the base water rate shall be adjusted to reflect the number of water consumers on a single meter. It doesn't give the council any other guidance on what the criteria is, is or is not. It just says that the council may grant, grant this. I think Public Works is okay with it. Legal Department's okay with it as long as she signs the release. And so I think the recommendation is that the council grant this exemption or this you know, I guess it's what do we call it here? It's a permission for a single meter. So just wanted to report that I did what I was instructed to do and we're waiting for a signature back.
Okay. Any, any questions, council? Okay, what's the pleasure, council?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
First off, thank you to Mr. Waddams for the additional staff loading on preparing this agreement. I think it is important. Thank you for that. And pursuant to the information from Mr. Schmidt and legal counsel, I move that under the authority of Garden City Code, we authorize the homeowner at 5901 North Brook Place to utilize one meter with the understanding of the additional base rates and contingent on the applicant's signature to the Waddams agreement.
I had second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, clerk call roll.
Councilmember Jorgensen?
Yes.
Councilmember Page?
Yes.
Councilmember Rasmussen?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacobs?
Yes.
Thank you. Next item, ordinances, resolutions, contracts, resolution 1162-24. This is relating to surplus property. There's a note from the chief of police in your packet on page 33. Looks like we're going to trade a, an old Crown Vic police car for, for a $3,000 credit.
Yes, sir.
Training credit.
Not a lot of demand for what we call pursuit intervention technique cars. They have specially made bumpers that we train with. Post is in need of one. And so we're replacing our old Crown Victoria, which is what we trade the post with some of the older SUVs or the newer SUVs, but older to us. In order to get, keep up with technology, the old Crown Vics don't have the technology in them than the newer cars. So we would actually maybe try to use the technique on. So our SUVs have some of the computer programming technology that actually fights back against the maneuvers that'll try to stabilize the car because it's slipping. And so this will benefit Post and it'll benefit us. And we do a lot of training and we go out to Post to use the track. But we use their, even their emergency vehicle operations cars to train with. So we don't tear up our police cars and we charge for that obviously. So it'll benefit us to do that training.
Any questions? It's a pleasure with council.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Hearing testimony from Chief Stambaugh and understanding that it benefits the safety and our police force intent to keep current with technology and a benefit to the post training academy, I move that we approve resolution 1162-24.
I would second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. Hearing none. Clerk call roll.
Councilmember Page?
Yes.
Councilmember Rasmussen?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacobs?
Yes.
Councilmember Jorgensen?
Yes.
Thank you. Next item, item G two is resolution eleven sixty-three dash twenty-four, adopting an updated purchasing policy. Uh, who's taking this one? Teresa, are you doing this?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you. Uh, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, this is the action item for the purchasing policy that we reviewed at the last council meeting. Uh, making a lot of updates to the limits since the state statutes have changed over the years. Um, I, we have not made a change to our purchasing policy probably in at least ten years. Uh, but again, with limits changing at the state level, we want to stay at those levels and just kind of reformed, reformatted the, the purchasing policy. So, it's a little bit easier to follow. So, this is just an action item to formalize that policy.
Okay, any questions of staff? Okay, what's the pleasure of council?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'd move to approve resolution one-one-six-three dash twenty-four.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, clerk call roll.
Councilmember Rasmussen?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacobs?
Yes.
Councilmember Jorgensen?
Yes.
Councilmember Page?
Yes.
Thank you. Next item, item G three. Um, motion carried, by the way. Next item, item G three, uh.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Point of order, can we go back to resolution eleven sixty-two dash twenty-four? Uh, there were some other things that were supposed to be in the packet for, uh, destruction or auction. I'm not seeing it in the packet. Uh, is it attached to yours? Well, so what was, uh, so we're talking about that Crown Vic, uh, Mr. Mayor. Also, there were supposed to be surveillance camera and accessories, hold wire and accessories, canine heat alarm, desktop radios, light bars and accessory radar unit, polygraph equipment, taser. I, I just don't see that in the packet. So, uh, sorry, I should have flagged that sooner. Starts on page thirty-three.
Mr. Waddams, does the general description of outdated, low-worth thought look, yeah, lead, validate platforms?
It starts on, the exhibit starts on page thirty-five or thirty?
Signer that count.
Thirty-four is the, uh, thirty-four is the ordinance or resolution. And then there's.
Exhibit one.
Okay, thank you. I stand, I stand corrected. That was, this is.
That's fine.
Okay, thank you.
I think we got them.
Sorry about that. I'm sorry. Wanted to make sure.
Something different. Uh, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Do you want to revise? I can include exhibit one in the language if you prefer.
No, I think it's, I think we'll cover it.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
I think you're right. Um, I'm just used to seeing the resolution before the exhibits. So, sorry, sorry for the interruption.
Okay. Let's go to G three. Charlie discovers a problem. We'll be back in two weeks and fix it.
It's fine. It's fine. It's just a little, it's fine.
Okay. Item G three is resolution eleven sixty-four dash twenty-four. This is a public records destruction authorization. Page fifty-four. In your packet, any? These records are we destroying?
Mr. Mayor, these, uh, once the audit is complete, and we have actually completed the audit, we can move forward with our standard annual, uh, destruction of prior records. So, this is for both the Treasury Department, and then we include on this resolution, the legal department's uh, records that need to be destroyed as well.
Okay, that list on page fifty-five?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay. All right, any questions of staff? Hearing none? Pleasure with council.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Um, I move that in accordance to our records retention policy, we approve resolution one-one-six-four dash two-four.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, the clerk call roll.
Councilmember Jacobs?
Yes.
Councilmember Jorgensen?
Yes.
Councilmember Page?
Yes.
Councilmember Rasmussen?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries. We'll now move to G four, resolution eleven sixty-five dash twenty-four. This is a memorandum of understanding between, um, Garden City Police, the sheriff, and Boise Police to enforce the laws of Idaho than the territorial limits in the two cities regardless of county boundaries. Chief, you want to?
Uh, so, probably a couple of years ago, uh, was requested to, we started a working group that is listed here, all the agencies that have a green belt running through their city or the county. So, this goes to the green belt. This affects the green belt from Lucky Peak to the county line eventually. Eventually, Star and Eagle weren't involved, but then Eagle got involved, and then Star said, we might as well do it since eventually we'll get, uh, hooked up. That's the plan. So, the whole idea was, is we want to come up, all, all the agencies that have one set of rules for how you, how you act on the green belt, no matter where you're at. Because part of the problem is you can, when you leave Lucky Peak, you could be in the county, then you're in Boise City, then you're in the county, and you don't know where. It's not demarcated. In Garden City, you can, you're on the north side of the rivers. You're coming toward the, uh, plantation, come onto the island there, then you come off to the fairgrounds. Now, you're in the county. Then you go back to Garden City under the Golden River Bridge, and then at the end of, uh, Duck Lake, you're back in the county. And then you go, if you go West Ridge, you go to the north side of the river. Now, you're back in Garden City. If you're on the south side of the river, you're in unincorporated county for a portion of it, and then Boise, a portion of it. And then, so it's just a mess, and everyone had different rules. So, the whole idea was, can we come up with one set of rules for the entire green belt? And then the other part of that is where, no matter where an officer is at on the green belt, they can enforce that rule specific to the green belt. So, this is everyone that worked on it. Um, so a couple of things, kind of what started this, I believe, is a lot of is the increase in.
Sure. Oh, I'm sorry. E-bikes. There was a lot of people who were complaining, elected officials,
that e-bikes were ruining the green belt. Uh, so, one of the things that we did in Garden City, up there is a bit of an affair, and I used some of the green belt as we put just plain clothes, guys, on the green belt and shorts and T-shirts, just watching to see what, what's going on, what's actually going on on the green belt. There was people wanting to ban e-bikes and, uh, so what did we find out? E-bikes are a part of the problem, or are they the problem? The problem is two. Number one, just like our roads, the green belt was never meant to have this amount of traffic. Just like in foothills. Now, they have rules in foothills where one day you can go uphill, the next day it's downhill. Can't be on it on a bike. It's just very common. There's just too many people. The other problem is it's no matter what group uses the green belt, they create a problem. So, I'm walking down the green belt with a friend of mine, and we stop, I'm shooting at it, I don't get out of the way. We stay in the middle of the green belt, and we talk. We have a dog that aren't, we have kids that aren't in control. So, uh, no matter who's using the green belt, there's a small percentage of each group that causes the issues. Um, so you have the main green belt that runs parallel to the river here, goes westbound, and we have the offshoots that come off of the atwater. Problem with that is, is people, just like in the street, you need to stop. You need to yield to the people that are actually using the green belt, not just rush out into it and run into people and cause crashes. So, uh, we have people in high-density areas that want to use the green belt to train on, on their bicycles. And so, regular bicycles, you can go pretty fast and create, uh, problems. So, and then each jurisdiction had different portions. So, what are we looking for? We're looking for a single ordinance, and we're almost at the ordinance. Um, Mr. Waddams and the group of attorneys have been working on it for probably a year now, trying to get all the city attorneys to buy up on it. And frankly, for not this jurisdiction, but other jurisdictions, no one wanted to do anything until after the November election. So, um, we've met many times. We are at the point where there's an ordinance. It's basically ready to go, I believe. Um, it's, we've sent, we've asked it to be simplified. Some of the cities have ordinance that say, so electric bikes have like class one, class two, class three. And it's based on, are they only human powered? Are they human powered and electric powered? And then up to the speed. We don't want any of that in there because that's not enforced. It's like saying, we're going to have a Ferrari as a class three car, but you can't have that on the engine, right? So, it's not the bike. It's not how fast the bike can go. It's the behavior. Just, you know, be civil and be polite about it. We can't, we can't enforce the, the, one, some jurisdictions have a in their law that says the manufacturers will put stickers on their bikes that say what class they are. Well, I don't know how we're going to enforce that when they're manufactured in China. It's just things that we can't enforce. We don't need it. We just need to tell people. Mr. Waddams can address that. I don't have the ordinance in here because it's not done yet. I don't, I don't think everyone's agreed. But what we're asking for tonight is adopt the ordinance when we get it. But for tonight, allow us to sign the MOU that allows us to enforce it everywhere. So, the other recommendation I have, we have is establish an executive committee to kind of work on this moving forward, whether the elected thinks that should be the chief or the sheriffs, or is it's a compromise of the mayor, or the mayor's appointee, or a commissioner, their appointee, just to go back to the working group on occasion and review it. You know, do we need to change it? What changes need to be made? Um, they would kind of have, you guys would have the final say as the electeds because you're the ones that are getting the phone calls and the emails about, hey, what's going on in the green belt? Where we want to go in the future. Uh, so, some of the other things, most of what we want to do is by having them throughout the county, it's great, let's, and then let's just educate. Let's have a press conference. Let's have the mayor and the councils all up there saying that we're trying to make it easier for the citizen. Now, let us educate. Let us do use the PIOs of all our departments. We can do videos, PSA is very short, YouTube, Facebook for all people like me and stuff. Um, but it's just education and trying to educate people on, look, when you're here to use the green belt, it's the jewel of the, of the valley. Respect that. Respect the other people that are on it, and don't be rude. If you want to talk, great, just step off to the side. Just those types of things. Um, eventually identify maybe some funding for solar-powered signs, not speed limit signs, but just say, hey, slow down. Um, and then I talked about the education. So, that's it. Just ask them tonight to approve the MOU. We'll get, hopefully, the legal will get the ordinance done here in the next, before spring is the whole idea, so that we can start the education process before the main uh, rush on the green belt for this, uh, this summer.
Great, thanks.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Uh, brief legal presentation?
Sure.
Okay, thank you. Uh, the, the actual the actual wording, uh, on the ordinance, the ordinance is not in front of you tonight. What's in front of you is the MOU. If the council, uh, authorizes the MOU, then I'll come back in a couple of weeks, maybe a month, come back with the actual ordinance. But the wording of the code amendment changes on page sixty-one of your packet. So, if you look at, uh, attachment A on page sixty-one of your packet, that is what all the jurisdictions have agreed to. Um, or, or at least the police advisors and the legal advisors, not the electeds. But the police advisors and the legal advisors are recommending this wording that all the codes, all the municipal codes in eighty county and the eighty county code reflect this. And I'll just put it into the record. Patrol speed, no person shall travel upon the green belt at a speed greater than or in a manner that is not reasonable and prudent under the conditions they have in regard to the actual and potential hazards that existing. Violation of this provision is an infraction. However, if travel, the travel also endangers or is likely to endanger any person or property, then that violation becomes a misdemeanor. Um, but there were several multiple meetings with law enforcement and with the legal advisors for law enforcement. And one of the topics of conversation is whether there should be a speed limit. Some jurisdictions currently do have a speed limit. Uh, the recommendation is that there should not be a speed limit on the green belt. Um, law enforcement and I think legal agree that we don't want officers out there with the radar guns or their line arc guns pointing at bicyclists, so on and so forth. Um, also, so how are you going to, if there's a speed limit, how's it going to be enforced? It would be hard to enforce. So, the recommendation is there's no, uh, per se speed limit. It says you cannot go greater than is reasonable and prudent. That wording is in the Idaho code. That code, that, that wording has been generally accepted by the appellate courts in Idaho. Uh, so that's the wording that we're looking at. This MOU says that, uh, that all the agencies, all the government agencies in the county, that's Q, no star, uh, or at least that have green belt going through it, right? And so, Meridian doesn't have green belt, but everybody else that has green belt are going to agree, at least in concept to this. We're going to have a memorandum of understanding that all the agencies are going to go forward with this, and we're going to enforce it consistently. Regarding, so regarding the resolution, it's resolution eleven sixty-five dash two-four. I spat a couple of words on here that I would like to change. And so, I'm going to recommend that you approve resolution eleven sixty-five dash two-four subject to amendment as recommended by the city attorney. I just want to clarify that this MOU is just for the green belt. It's not for anything but the green belt. And I just want to, uh, specify that in the resolution. So, that would be my recommendation.
Any questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Um, Chief, is, is there been any discussion on any non, you know, because I hear this, like, either, uh, way to slow traffic, there's a way with stagger gauge and things like that across the green belt, or is this, I mean, I know this is more like jurisdictional consistency, but I didn't know if there's any discussion at the same time about things like that. I don't know if speed bump is going to be the right word, but like, we, you know.
There has been.
People get off their bike.
Very low level, just as ideas that we move forward in the future in congested areas of the green belt where there might be, it might necessitate because as much as we'd like to think everyone's going to be civil and follow the rules in congested areas where there actually would be a hard break or anything that's motorized or human-powered, where you'd actually maybe have to get off it, which you're like, uh, similar to what's on the west end of the, uh, nature trail.
Right, right.
Like, that, that would just be, that would be, that'd be a very hot topic that would probably need to be addressed at the higher levels of the mayor council.
So, that'd be, that'd be a separate discussion. It wasn't part of these discussions.
That, no, sir, that's.
Another day.
Yes, sir.
There's just areas like around water district where it's so congested that that'd probably be a good idea.
So, the one thing that in case of the council and mayor didn't know is that the rental companies such as, I think we have Lion is now in left now. There are geo things down there. So, when you hit a certain point, they're automatic, they automatically slow on their e-bikes and their electric scooters. So, uh,
That's good.
But that doesn't apply to, uh, people who buy that for personal use, so.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Chief, first of all, I want to thank you for participating in this effort. Um, this certainly is one of the topics that I have been contacted the most by our constituency. Uh, could, and you've hit every single issue. There are concerns about who's going too fast, the safety when people stop in the middle of the green belt. Um, how do we educate folks to use the green belt more safely? So, I really, I'm grateful that you've participated in it and represented Garden City. Mr. Mayor, I do have a question. Do you have opinion on who should participate in the, the committee that, moving forward?
Uh, no, I hadn't really thought about the committee moving forward. Um, this has been going on a long time and, and getting, uh, the various participants is listed on the same page.
Yeah.
I thought was a necessary first step. Um, and this will be, now, there'll be an evolutionary component to this, I think. Uh, and uh, the language of the ordinance, I want to take a hard look at because the, uh, amendment protocol uh, on an ordinance, I don't know if it can be referenced to something that can be changed uh, by resolution or not, but, um, uh, you know, uh, we can amend ordinances. So, I guess it's not that big a deal. But no, I hadn't thought about next steps. I thought this is the foundation for the first step. We get this done. Uh, no blaring over my dead body statements from my electeds. Uh, so we get this, this headed down, headed down the path. One thing, from an administrative perspective, um, uh, uh, allowing our police officers, uh, to make a judgment based on the circumstances at a particular place, uh, and at a particular time relative to whether someone's being reckless or not essentially. Uh, without this, the speed piece, I think, gives our officers actually greater latitude uh, to deal with problems. Because you can, you can be causing and be reckless, uh, and maybe not reach the speed limit. The other thing is the staffing. Uh, if this, you're going to have something enforced, uh, on I don't know how many miles from Lucky Peak to the eighty county line, but it's a bunch. Um, then you know, we've got, we've got challenges staffing that, but we can respond, uh, when we do do, uh, patrols, uh, consistency is something I really like. So, that's a long way of saying no. That's a long way of saying, no.
So, Mr. Mayor, uh, I do have an opinion and I would. I would prefer to see a mix of law enforcement officers and electives to, to be represented. On a committee that is crossing so many borders. Um, and. Chief, you may, or Mr. Rods, you may have the answer to this. The, uh, and I think, Mr. Mary, you were touching on it. When we consider. Entering into uh, understandings with other authorities. I think it's great, and, and again, I applaud this. The, the um, concern or question I would have is. In the event that, for instance, the city of Boise decides that, hey. As drafted, not working, we want a change. And we do not agree to that change as a city. Then what? How, how do you dissent or, or? I'm certain that, you know, I think there would be a preference to, hey, we want to take certain steps to, to work everybody into an agreement. But if it gets to the point where, hey, we don't agree, we're not going to please and enforce a speed limit, for instance. Then how do we extricate ourselves from any obligation to the agreement?
Mayor, Councilmember Jorgensen, Chief Stanbuck, can I take it? For Stanbuck at answering that, okay, so uh, Councilmember Jorgensen, just so we're clear, if the council um, authorizes this MOU. The council is agreeing in concept to the law that's on page sixty-one, which is there's no speed limit. And there's also, there's an infraction violation and there's a misdemeanor violation, so the, the, the committee stage is over. I mean, that's, this is what, uh, if you authorize this, you're saying this is what you want the ordinance to look like. Uh, the only way it really works is if all the jurisdictions uh, sign off on it. There was one jurisdiction that initially i- indicated to their law enforcement and to their legal advisors that they did want a, a speed limit. Um, there, uh, I think their law enforcement and their legal advisors talked to those electives uh, informally and said it doesn't work. And so now that jurisdiction's at the table saying no speed limit. But uh, if you agree to this MOU, you're agreeing to the, conceptually to the law that's on page sixty-one. And the only way it works is if all the agencies sign up on it, I think.
And I would think down the road, even five, ten years from now, something happened where there was a jurisdiction that didn't like it. So we have a lot of MOUs, we have an. The critical incident task force that we operate here, it's an MOU, so if five years from now, for whatever reason. Something that could fall, we just, we just, we just back out of the MOU, we're not signing it again, and. Then I would assume at that point, we would have to go back and go to our, here in the states. We were comfortable with what we still had, or if we needed to change the code because of.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Can I piggyback on a question uh, that Councilmember Jorgensen brought up? Uh, it's my understanding this Green Belt Executive Committee, for lack of a better word. Lived beyond the MOU into shaping and being the steering committee for behavior on the green belt or. Um, what we want to see, uh, is, is that not the case?
My, I mean, when I came up with the idea, my idea was some little bit similar to Councilmember George, some to have a working group like that. Would come up with, this is what we'd like to do, and then that executive committee, whoever the other side that should be. We hear our recommendations and we decide, if they want to include, we have. Mr. Schmidt about, as we redo the green belt, we want to. Throughout the entire county, we want to strike them and put a dotted line down the middle consistently throughout the county, so there are discussions. With parks that are kind of outside of these discussions that could be part of that, but. From my standpoint initially, no, it was just dealing with law enforcement. Could easily be expanded.
And if I may just, um. I, I think no, and, and any of us that have knocked doors here in the community would acknowledge that. The, the advocacy groups uh, for bicycles and mobility. Uh, modified uh, abilities. Are, they are probably all gonna want to have some advisory role, even if it's not a voting role on this committee because of the unique. Methods in which they use the green belt that many of us, people are just walkers or just boners or just cyclists, don't, don't consider. And I think there's a lot of value in including the community in that, even if it's in a non-voting role. And, and I just want to throw that out uh, for, for future contemplation.
On the, I, I use the green belt all the time, I commute back and forth to work. I don't think I need a role of voice on that, but I think the people who have alternative, for whatever reason, whether, we have some people who live at Mallard Point. That are in our chairs and they go back. Absolutely, for ADA purposes, yes, uh. Some of these groups that use the green belt to train on, things like that, yeah, they want to give advice to the people who, the agencies they live on, yeah, but they should, I agree, they should not have a voting role. Because uh.
And at some point, the committee would never get anything done.
Exactly, yeah. And it would be a, that, it's a harder discussion because in the. My, in my simple mind, between basically probably me and me in the future because of the boardwalk, through. Almost probably Harris Ranch, there's gonna need to be hard breaks, right? Now, when you get out past the West Bridge. Going out to eat, it's Fort Eagle right now, there's not a lot of people sun out there, so that reasonable and prudent is gonna be different than it is in the congested. And so if that's, if I'm a train, if I want to be on a road bike or train, that's where I need to go out and do it, not behind the fairgrounds or the park. Yeah, definitely on the ADA side, the hard break, those are just big, bigger discussions than what we wanted to start at this initial. For space, this was just, can we even all go on the same page?
It seems very.
Take little baby steps.
It's just allowing the different jurisdictions, if you see something wrong, we all agree that we can act regardless of where our, where our officers are in the green belt. I mean, it's that high level. So it's like, you see something wrong and you're voicing your guards of the police, you can. You can do something and vice versa is all it is.
Quite a bit, and part of the discussion, talking to the county a little bit, if they, if they build this good park. That's a lot of pressure, it's hard, if, you know, they're talking about expanding potentially by the summer, so. We all work really, really well together, just having the MOU that takes any. Indecision, now can I do this or not? Yeah, something great about related to this. Go for it. Take enforcement, educate. It's a, I, to me, this is a big, long-term. Solution to help the community using a green belt that runs through all kinds of jurisdictions, it'd be like. The interstate ran through a bunch, or Shenden runs through a bunch of different cities, and we all have all kinds of different rules, that would be complicated, I'll just try to. Make the green belt easier. When they're using it, we don't have to think, well. Because literally there's places out where you go from Boise that doesn't have a speed limit to the county that has a ten mile an hour speed limit. Now you're back from Boise, the nearest county, but it's not signed. And so it's not fair to the people to use it, and then if we were ever to try and force them, the amount of signs would be on the green. Disgusting, I mean, it would kind of clutter it up, so I. This was just from the law enforcement standpoint, those are great questions, and I think, yes, that would probably be a good idea to have. A group that oversees all those things, so it is, it's just a great bill. Throughout the county.
Yep.
And, and Mr. Mayor, and, and Mr. Rods, Chief, I appreciate that, uh. I think that perhaps we heard. Something with different meaning, where you're, you're saying this is our committee, we have a memorandum of understanding. I understand that. My question regarding is a governance committee. And that was the purpose of my question, is moving forward, who's going to represent? The ongoing education, whatever materials we want to distribute at big bike shops. The, the solar powered, you know, slowdown sign. That I think, um, that was my point is, I think that governance committee should have representation from electives. And law enforcement, it shouldn't be one or the other.
Right, that, my idea was the law enforcement would be the working group, the huge ideas to the. The executive strength. Identify for the funding. I'd like a little subcommittee, thank you for that, elected would be the decision makers. We would be the working group down here, seeing this is between legal and law enforcement, this is the things we need, or this is what is working, and what is working.
That makes sense.
Yeah.
So, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, just to follow up on that too, so if the council likes this idea, then uh, I will try to, ordinance, come back with that. Where it's a piece of that ordinance, though, is going to be repealing. A cur, a current portion of our code, because our code currently does have a speed limit on the green belt. Our green belt is currently part of our park system, and in any part of our parks, I think. You're not supposed to be going faster than twenty or twenty-five miles per hour for code. So if the council no longer wants a speed limit on the green belt, then we're gonna have to repeal that part, it's part of this code amendment.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Mr. Rods, would we also be looking at, um, I don't know how it matches up with our sister cities that have green belt? In their jurisdiction, but uh, also I think in part of our code references. Sort of after dark, you have to be in transit uh, commuting, essentially, it's not a place to avoid or, or recreate.
That's in our code, yes, yeah, we would not reveal that portion, and all again, I know Boise has that.
Okay.
So that we can't, like, I commute at nine or eight in the morning, headlights, so. As long as you're going through. Parks and.
So just for the record, Mayor Council, we have vetted this with Public Works, we have vetted it with, I think, uh, hopefully sufficiently with Development Services. Uh, the definition of green belt on page sixty-one is uh, development services definition of green belt. Um, and so this, and it's been vetted by the bicycle advocacy groups as well, um, I think I heard from all the groups that uh, they recommend no speed limit. Just uh, you know, be prudent when you're out there. Um, so it has been vetted through the committees um, to that extent. And again, if you uh, authorize this MOU, you're telling us that you want the law to be basically page sixty-one, and then I'll come back with that.
Any further questions? Hey.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I would move to uh, approve resolution one-one-six-five dash two-four as amended. And as recommended by the city's attorney. And to clarify that this is specific to the green belt.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, any discussion on the motion? Very now the clerk called it all.
Councilmember Jorgensen?
Yes.
Councilmember Page?
Yes.
Councilmember Rasmussen?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacobs?
Yeah.
Great, thank you. Next item, item G five. This is resolution eleven sixty-seven dash twenty-four. Um, again, uh, Stormborough, you want to start us off on this?
Um, yes, thank you, Mayor, and members of the council, it's an evening to discuss the green belt, um, I guess. Um, uh, this resolution would be for a funding agreement. Um, to allow for a bridge to the Plantation Island to bypass the detour, detour route from Fifty Second Street. That goes around um, and down Fifty Second and up Remington. And the city's planning documents has identified three different ways uh, to bypass this detour. Um, one of which is along the riverfront. Um, however, there are homes um, in those properties there. And the city has discussed um, this matter with those homeowners, and we do know that they are unwilling participants. Um, another option would be a shorter detour. Uh, that would go down Fifty Second, but then cut across properties as they uh, redevelop and back up. Um, the, that, um. Potential, there, there um, would still be a conflict with on-street vehicular conflict. In that uh, it would require that at least four homes would be passed by, or four properties. Two of which are multi um, multi-used homes, so there's a mobile home park as well as a condo. Area, so there would still be some conflicts uh, with vehicles there. Um, it's notable that when urban renewal was in that area, it's been a number of years. That the Urban Renewal Agency did contact the, the major property owner at least twice. Um, there wasn't a hard no on that option, but um, to date, uh, they're not a willing participant either. And then the third is at Fifty Second, a bridge that would go to Plantation Island. And then on Plantation Island, there's a network of um, pathways where there's a bridge that would come back to the Ada County. Um, green belt system at the Expo Idaho, and then also north to the Boise system. A few years ago, FACS, which is Friends for Ada, can, Ada and Canyon County Trail Systems. Um, they had received an easement to utilize the Plantation Island. Um, that's about five years, if I remember correctly, a five years easement. And they approached the city and asked the city if the city would be willing to have that bridge go there. Um, at the time, the city had indicated that there wasn't capacity uh, staffing um, to, to take that as a city project at the time. Impacts indicated that they'd be willing to work on that project. Um, however, they are a group of volunteers and have certain restrictions that the city doesn't have. And so the city has moved the project through Compass's project development uh, program where. Um. A professional consultant will identify a potential cost as well as a preferred alignment, and that was done. And then the city took that and uh, entered that into the Compass's system for funding. Federal funding, and it was awarded funding. And so, um, the, the match for that federal funding is. Right around a hundred and fifty-six thousand, a hundred thousand uh, dollars. And we do know to date that the city uh, through those efforts did commit twenty thousand dollars. And I believe that FACS has at least another ten thousand dollars, but there is quite a shortfall. Um, if, if there's only thirty thousand dollars. With federal um, funds, the match is seven point three-four percent of the overall. And that's a, that's a hard minimum. Um, and. The, the request tonight would be either to enter into that agreement, knowing that there's that shortfall. Um, anticipating that construction wouldn't be until twenty twenty-eight. And that would give um, time for funding potentially to be identified. Uh, staff has reached out uh, to Compass to see if there would be a penalty. Um, if, if the city were to design the bridge and not be able to uh, fund the construction. Obviously, that's not best practices, um, uh, but there would not be a specific penalty. Without a standard questions.
Uh, this is a. This is an interesting one, um, it puts the city in a position, um. That would require frankly some speculation. And. Um, the. I think I should disclose now, uh, something that I think we all know, uh. You can't bind a future council to a specific decision uh, like this, absent some process that. Would probably uh. Give Mr. Rods a headache, but um. So I think, uh. What we would. We've made a commitment for twenty and. To move this to the next step, we would come up with another. Was it, was it another uh, ten or seven or eight or nine thousand?
Um, Mayor, thank you, um, to enter into the agreement, if you pass the resolution and enter into the agreement. Um, right now, um, uh, the city would write a check for seven thousand dollars. And then, um. I believe it's three hundred thousand dollars or so is the estimated cost of design, so the next step. And if there is that thirty thousand dollars available, that would hypothetically cover whatever match. Uh, would be required for the design of the bridge.
So the gamble is, we'll be into it thirty thousand uh, to get the bridge designed. Uh. And, uh. You know, see what's available as time goes on to, to cover the gap. So that's the speculative nature of this, um. You know, uh. There are lots of opinions about the connection, I like the, I like the crossing personally. Uh. Uh, the city would inherit some additional maintenance obligations with the pathway system, uh. I have some. Preliminary thoughts on, on that until we can. you know. We've got plenty to do to keep up with the path system we have, but you know, those are down the road and opportunities, uh, grant opportunities, uh, efforts, uh. For um. Foundations, for example, that are looking for a project that benefits the region. Um, so there are, there are some avenues with some effort that, that might bridge the gap that we're talking about. Um. The think the uh. Um. If the council, should the council authorize this uh, additional seven thousand dollars, then uh. I'll get with Lisa and we will come back uh, at the next meeting and show you where we're, where, where that money's coming from. Um. We carry uh, part in our budget of unallocated funds. It's not a lot. It's, is it twenty-five?
Mr. Mayor, just consulting with Ms. Thorneboro, uh. In this twenty-four budget, we have set aside twenty thousand to go towards this project. It's not an additional seven. The seven would come out of that.
Oh. Well, there you go.
Yeah, thank you.
So what are we gonna do with the? Okay, I misunderstood. Anyway, uh, so I think the discussion here is, uh, are you inclined to uh, to uh. See what we can, the city can do over time. Uh, we're talking three or four years. Um. To bring this to fruition, at least get it designed. We don't even have a cost on it. We got a plan. Um, we think the design phase, Jenna, would take a year or eighteen months, something like that.
Mayors, that is correct.
Okay, so uh, next step would probably be in our twenty-twenty-six budget. So, questions, comments? Did we explain it enough?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I'd like to um, express an opinion and um, here are the thoughts of my colleagues. Um, if we have time for a discussion.
Certainly.
Prior to my motion?
Certainly.
I'll, I'll start off. I uh. I believe the signature, even the hallmark of Garden City is that a river cuts through. And there's this fantastic green belt and it's what draws people to the city. It's an economic engine. As I see detours, uh, and I look at these other options to accomplish this uh, connect, the connectivity. They're just to me, they're overcomplicated and there's additional risk to safety. I appreciate uh, that the nature of this decision would be speculative. Uh, and I would also say that almost every decision we make is speculative. Uh, just it's a, it's a shorter timeline for most decisions um, than, than this one. Uh, future councils should, if they adhere to the comprehensive plan, honor the green belt and its improvement and maturity. And we should lean into its expansion. Money, uh, I'm gonna commit to making some phone calls. I know we all know community leaders and developers who have interests in this city. Who knows? We could probably get creative on our end and form some partnerships. But uh, those are my thoughts. I'm, I'm role. Uh, and I also wanted to um, make a record of thanking FACS and our partners at Compass. This is, this has uh, been a project for some time. And if, if I'm fortunate enough to enjoy a reelection in twenty-eight, I would see myself being an advocate for this coming to fruition.
Thank you. Other comments?
Mr. Mayor, Ms. Thorneboro, I have a question. So for clarity, for twenty thousand dollars, we'll get a design of the bridge?
Um, Mayor, Councilmember Jorgensen, a little bit higher than that. Um, the, the agreement breaks out the different costs. And just a really rough estimate, it's about three hundred thousand dollars. And so I'm taking ten percent because math's a lot easier and, and the numbers. Um, or the overall expenditures locked in, I don't anticipate that every um, portion will be exact, the design, the right of way and construction. So I'm saying roughly thirty thousand, so twenty thousand from the city. And then I believe that FACS has another. We have documentation that another ten thousand has been uh, committed to FACS for this effort.
So Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
President of the council, my, my my observation is, I concur, we do need to connect the green belt. We do need to, I, I mean that right now, it's so annoying to, to have to make that detour. It's super frustrating to me personally. So I really like the idea. My observation and experience is that um, although speculative, uh. This is somewhat, people are immediately gonna go eh, but if you create a, a plan and a design, it, it significantly, in my opinion, improves the odds that you're going to have other people buy in. If you put the time, energy and effort. The other consideration that I have is that uh, it's not gonna get less expensive. If we postpone the development and design of the sand wait in another year, two years to pay for those services, it's gonna be more expensive. Is, so my inclination is I don't consider this a poor investment at all. I, I think it is. Uh, it, it's providing an opportunity and resources to help enable further future development that will be in alignment with our comprehensive plan. And provide significant improvement in accessibility and continuity along the green belt. So I'm, I'm personally a big fan of this also.
Yeah, but I don't see a reason why you would not stay, not stay. Why you, I guess I don't know why you would ever say no to this, those. I'm all favorable.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, um, I concur with my fellow council members as well. Um, and to steal the term that the chief used earlier, um. The green belt is our crown jewel. Um, and I think um. Continued investment in, in the green belt just only makes our city greater. So um, I'm very supportive um, of this resolution.
Entertaining action.
Mayor, I approve that we approve resolution one-one-six-seven dash two-four, approve the agreement um, for the connection on Fifty-Second Street. Or a bridge on the south side of the
Second.
Got a motion to have a second? Oh, man, I've got a second. I'm sorry. Got a motion and a second. Uh, is there any discussion on the motion? Here now the clerk call it all.
Councilmember Page?
Yes.
Councilmember Rasmussen?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacobs?
Yes.
Councilmember Jorgensen?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries. Uh, next item under unfinished business. Uh, wanted to give you a little update on the FEMA flood study. Uh, this is in your packet on page eighty-three. Uh, we've had, uh, we being Colin, uh, and Jenna, self. Our city engineer, Joe Canning, and I've forgotten Nick's last name. The hydrologist that we have. It's okay. Nick, if you're listening, my apologies.
Uh huh.
Um. Uh, this is, you know, we're several years into this now and the purpose of this study uh, is to determine how we can mitigate the flood risk uh, through Garden City. One of the reasons that we are um, pursuing this study is uh, much of the city uh, was shown to be in the floodplain uh, when we did the twenty-seventeen map update for the Federal Emergency Management Agency. A flood insurance program. Uh, there was a dramatic change from the twenty-seventeen maps from the two thousand and three maps. Uh. That involved significantly increased areas. So right now, under the, the most recent maps, twenty-seventeen, seventy-four percent of cities in the floodplain. Uh, and that's significantly more than was shown on the maps in two thousand and three. So uh, the city requested from FEMA and was granted what's called a seclusion. And what that means is for flood insurance rating purposes. Landowners can still utilize the two thousand and three maps so long as the city is making an effort to deal with a way to mitigate what's shown on the twenty-seventeen maps. Uh, this core study is our way of accomplishing that. Um. I haven't, in the past, been terribly optimistic because the dollars seem to be so huge to make a real difference. Uh. But as a result of this meeting, uh, which, in which uh, it was explained to us, uh. The modeling that is now underway. Uh, are you gonna show that, Jenna?
Um, Mayor, you're doing a great job uh, with, with this, um, but there, I do have.
Um. And uh, it's appearing now that uh, there's an opportunity to do. I guess I had envisioned from the Riverside Hotel uh, to the west. Well, to the head of Eagle Island, we'd had to have this big wall all the way down the, you know, and it would cost fifty million dollars or something, you know. Uh. There are some areas that can make a significant dent in the amount of the city that it would be in the floodplain uh, with some uh, doable projects, one of which uh, would be in the urban renewal area. And uh, I think you're gonna get a briefing on that, uh. Councilmember Jacobson coming up. So we just hadn't talked about this for a while and we wanted to let you know that we're, we're making some headway. And the, the crux of this is the engineering modeling that, that, that they, that they're performing and we're gonna probably have more updates. Well, I can commit to you. We'll have more updates as this moves along. So um, there are improvements up near the Riverside Hotel that look very promising that are doable. Uh, playing there and uh. You can use your cursor, maybe. Uh, but areas, there you go. There are areas that are in the urban renewal area and we'll be talking to the agency about, about that. Then there are some other opportunities that would be uh, uh. Enhancement, enhanced conveyance uh, under the Glenwood Bridge. Uh, that could make a significant difference. So as that develops, uh, we'll, we'll keep you updated. Uh, in, in August of twenty when, when did we enter into the agreement with the core, twenty-one?
Mayor, I believe it was twenty, goodness, it's in my memo. So twenty, twenty-one, maybe twenty, twenty, maybe.
Anyway, we entered into an agreement uh, on a fifty percent match for a one-point-six-million-dollar effort that we were in very simple, high-level terms describing again to you tonight. Um, after any, entering into that agreement, um, the Corps has come back and said it's gonna cost more than that. So
Twenty-two.
Uh, we'll get some detail on that, but uh. Uh, we're gonna have to come up with not eight hundred thousand, but it looks like it's gonna be closer to uh, one-point-one million.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah.
I remember one of the things that we had concern is there didn't, one, there wasn't really a good explanation of why it jumped eight hundred thousand dollars.
Mm-hmm.
You know, from one-six to two-two, and then there was also no guarantee that it would jump from two-two to two-eight, three-two. I mean, it's just kind of this unopened, give us money until we think we've paid for it. And so you would mention that you were gonna go back, I think, to them and just say, this is just not something a small city can afford. Can't, we can't have a, basically, I think what I took it as is a blank check to charge us whatever they want and there's no detail, there's no explanation, there's no anything around why it's costing what it's costing, it's still an open blank check.
Well, we did have a visit with them and uh, in, in a meeting, uh, the folks from Walla Walla came down and uh, I explained what you just explained. I won't restate it. Uh. And uh, I asked them to direct the money that we have invested now and would invest, which we've invested what we originally, part of what we originally committed to. Uh, to concentrate on this modeling and leave other components of the study uh, until later. Cause I wanted to know whether we had something that there was some feasibility of accomplishing. Uh. So there's some more detail on that that we're gonna get uh, as we go along within the money we've already allocated for this. Um, and uh. We haven't, they haven't presented a new agreement to us yet. Is that correct, Jenna?
Mayor, that is correct.
Okay, so uh, when that happens, then we'll be having another discussion. Uh. But the important part, the, the deliverable that that makes this decision a, gee, this is a good idea or not. The deliverable is what we're, what we're looking at up here on what can we do in certain sections along the river? That is frankly very doable, uh, raising an elevation on a green bay belt path seven or eight inches. In certain areas, you know, or, or, you know, I don't wanna get into the weeds on that, cause I don't you know, uh, uh. Uh, you know, some areas you can, just, these are just examples. Uh, you could have a concrete wall that maybe is a little thicker and sixteen inches high that is a, a bench that can contain so that, you know, in certain finite areas. So, so there's some, we're just making some headway. I just wanted to, I was encouraged by it. And what happens when we get another agreement? What happens? How far we get with the money we have allocated? Now, those are discussions that are coming, but I didn't, I thought it was time after I saw this that uh, that I mentioned that to you. Uh.
Thank you.
And you know, we'll, we'll take it as it, as it comes. Uh, and you know, we've got, uh, I wish I could remember Nick's last name. I'm so sorry.
Mayor, my apologies. It's Nick Cross with Quadrant Consulting.
Okay. Uh. Uh, he has a lot of experience working in this area. He understands this very well. Uh. He studies these models and um. Um. There are ways to do this a piece at a time, uh, he's convinced. Uh, and starting at the up, upper end, uh, meaning the east end, uh, could have a very dramatic impact on the amount of ground that's in the floodplain up there. And that translates either into uh, uh. Um. When the river's blown again and they do new maps, that could become a zone act or it could become out of the, out of the picture altogether. So, and if you're paying flood insurance on a home mortgage, that's, it's a big picture altogether. So, and if you're paying flood insurance on a home mortgage, that's, it's a big deal. So, so anyway, that's just an information item and there'll be more to come and maybe next time when we do this, we'll invite Nick and he can get a little more into the weeds than I'm able to do. So if you'll allow me, we'll move on to new business. We, we good there? Okay. Riverside Pond Conveyance Repair. This is on page 105. Everybody knows where the Riverside Pond is. It's this city-owned pond across the river where we've got the boat dock. And we're not getting we're not getting water in there. So we've got that boat dock and fishing game stocks that. So what, what we're seeing in there is basically the groundwater elevation. Now, so anyway, I've been discussing with Colin what we can do about it. He's had a number, not a number, he's had some people look at it, try to diagnose what we think the problem may be. So Colin, why don't you take it from there?
Yeah, Mayor, thank you. Members of the council, the mayor's right on track. The, we've, we've found that right now, we suspect the problem to be on the piece of pipe and I apologize for not having the map up here, but it was in your packet. Can, is there any way that we can push that up there?
It's on page 106.
Not, not the greatest map, I, I will admit, but in the bottom right-hand corner, that's where we divert water out of the Boise River and this is what fills our water, excuse me, our water right to the, the Riverside Pond. So at that point, we're at theverts, it goes into the Westmoreland Wetlands area. And there's another diversion point there that goes underneath Chindon to a control box, irrigation control box that then pushes that water into the Riverside Pond. The final control box on the west side, that, that is where we have found that there's, we have a blockage, a pretty major one. We've, we've tried to run our back truck through there, our cleaner that we clean sewers with, to try to blow the rocks out of there and the pipe is old corrugated metal. It's way past its life expectancy. And this is where our biggest problem is right there. As we run the header through there on the back truck, it stops going straight and starts going down because there's a hole in there and it just starts excavating dirt. So that's not going to fix it. So what we're going to have to do is, we've come up with a plan to basically do what we do in some of our sewer lines and slip it with a little smaller diameter pipe and push that pipe through there, which will give us a, a clean, a clean slate. Hopefully it pushes out whatever blockages in there. If not, we're going to have to dig it up at that point, which that's, that might be part of the solution, but we're hoping that it's not. We're hoping that we can just slide this new pipe through. We, we have a tree, trees are the biggest problem with this old pipe is the roots get in there because they're looking for a place to live and they start producing a root ball which completely blocks off that pipe. So we're hoping that this plan will eliminate that, give us a brand new, it'll be fused pipes. So there will be no, no way for roots to get in there. We hope that this is a long-term solution to this problem. In that very specific area, there may be problems farther upstream that we'll have to maybe take a look at after we take care of a known problem. So I stand for any questions?
What's the length?
Uh, the mayor, councilmember Jacobs, the, the area in the red square from that diversion box to the pond is about 200 feet. And we've, we've been able to go into it about 80 feet and then up from the pond about 40 or so. So we've got about 60 to 80 feet that is in question right now.
And you would have slipped it's 200 feet long.
We would slip the entire thing, correct? Yeah, all the way from the, the head gate and the diversion structure and you would go all the way to the pond.
Makes sense. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, yes.
Mr. Schmidt, this is speculative. Can you comment on the construction characteristics of the corrugated pipe? Is it corrugated or is it something else from the project area to the Westmoreland Park diversion? Is it in need of being sleeved or slipped, whatever the terminology is?
Mayor, Council President Page, it's a great question. I, I don't believe that it is corrugated pipe. I think that was, I, I, I can't give you a good answer. I will research that and find out what I can for you. I, I was thinking of timeline. I know that, I know the section that we're going to replace at one time, that was the conveyance from the river to the pond and that was the only conveyance. I think the other one was done later. So then it went from the Westmoreland Pond. And then obviously the, the structure that we put out in the river, that's done just on a yearly basis. It comes in and come, and goes out. So in, all that to say, it may not be the same material. It may be a little better material than corrugated. So, but I, I can certainly find out for you.
I have another question for you, if, if you permit me. In the packet, we saw a memo from the Riverside Village Homeowners Association, some representatives there. Can you speak for a minute and just make a, a record about how this improvement or this repair would impact the the ponds downstream?
Mayor, Council President Page, the, the hope, the desire of this work that we're doing is to convey more water into our pond, which alternatively goes into their system and, and would give them more volume in the ponds through Riverside. And I believe at the end, it turns and goes into the woods, right at, right at the woods entrance. So that, that's our hope is that this will convey more water. One thing, one thing I do want to point out though, is that our diversion structure that we have on the Boise River, the, the Boise River changes daily. And some years, 17 in particular, there was a major channel change in the river which prompted a lot of the work that we're doing right now is in the past, we never had to put a structure out there and there was plenty of water. The head gate was full. Now we put Jersey Bear, well, they're called eco blocks, they're not we put those out in the river to channel more water into the inlet to Westmoreland and we still are, are barely getting by. The, the blockage isn't helping us at all, but the hope, I guess, to get to your point, the hope is that the work we're doing now will ultimately provide more water to our pond, which in turn, more water to the Riverside Pond system.
Thank you.
Hey. This is an action item, council. I'm we're thinking that we're looking at about $50,000. Is that what we're still looking?
Mayor, yes, yeah.
Don't know exactly. We'll get some of that. This is I think our funding source would be some savings, maybe part of our unallocated money we have. You know, if the council is amenable to doing this, then we come back at our next meeting with the specific funding sources. Any budget line item changes? It's things are getting old. There's a lot of, a lot of things other than me that's getting old. So.
So is there a resolution that you need? Just a resolution?
Well, I, I think, yeah. I just, I guess the motion would be to allow me to have Colin take this to the next level. See if we can get a bid, come back to you with how we'd pay for it.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I move that you authorize Mr. Schmidt to engage in investigative measures, including bid gathering if if he determines that to be prudent to mitigate this problem.
Good second.
I've got a motion in a second. Any discussion on the motion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
To clarify, I second the motion and would request the added component that the intent would be for you and Mr. Schmidt to come back with the budget solution and/or the funding sources for the project also.
Understood.
Very good.
Any further discussion? Your number four call roll?
Councilmember Reston?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacobs?
Yes.
Councilmember Jorgensen?
Yes.
Councilmember Page?
Yes.
That concludes the business on our agenda for the evening. Entertain a motion to adjourn.
I so move.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
opposed or stand adjourned?